5 million for a fiscal 2017 budget at this time at a little over $135 million. In comparison to fiscal year 2016, those total appropriation, the total appropriation was over 176 million with less operating transfers of 9.3 million for a total operating and appropriated budget of $166 million. So there was a significant decrease. Most of that decrease relates to over 31.5 million dollars in completion of capital projects and also as well as less debt service payments that are coming from the Ramsey Tiffed. So that equates to the 31.5 million dollars. Again, the reduction in that capital is the major completion that we're seeing taking place right now at the metro sewer upgrades that are taking place and then as well as the Basin Creek Treatment Plant. The preliminary budget includes approximately 43 million dollars in appropriations from the tax-supported funds and this represents approximately 32% of the total appropriations for fiscal year 2017. As we go through the presentation on the next slide, you'll see a graph. We handed out some of these graphs which are very similar to the ones that you've seen in our prior presentations. They're just fluctuating small dollar amounts based on that amendment sheet that you'd received earlier. If you look at the first graph, it talks about that total budget appropriations by an object code and you'll see that 35% of the budget is related to capital outlay again driven by those major construction projects that we still have out there ongoing with the treatment plant and the finishing of the metro sewer upgrades. The next is the operating expenditures of the 43.3 million dollars and then finally third in all tax-supported funds is the personnel services, which is about 29% of the budget for all funds. Now if you shift to the next page, it looks quite differently when you look at tax-supported funds only. Excuse me. In the 2017 budget tax-supported funds, over 60% of the budget is related to personnel services. So that's your, all your costs related to salaries and benefits and as well as the payroll and personnel charges. And then we also have 9% that's going towards capital, those larger capital items in the budget, which the chief executive will address a little bit farther down in the presentation. But there's items such as the fire apparatuses that were budgeted last year that are in process right now. We're just making some progress payments on them and then we will pay them out in fiscal year 17. Again, a carryover from capital related to the retaining wall and detention center projects and then IT upgrade. So most of the capital that you were seeing in the 2017 budget relates to projects that have not been completed in 2016 or carrying over into 2017. There's not a lot of vehicles or other smaller capital items entered into this 2017 budget. The operating expenditures in the tax-supported funds is 26% of the budget. Again, I need to bring to your attention that personnel is 60% in the tax-supported funds and operating expenses of 26% as we go farther down to address some of the cuts that we've made. I think these are key points to bring out right now. I think that chief executive will now talk a little bit about the priorities in the budget.
Madam Chair, members of the council, thanks, Jeanette, thanks Julie and other members of the finance and budget department who helped put this preliminary budget together in addition to our department heads. I just kind of wanted to give an overview of some of the major initiatives that are included in, in this year's budget. I know as Jeanette explained in some of the reductions that we have made, it's a pretty tight budget, but I still think we were able to balance it with continuing some major infrastructure improvements for our citizens and businesses here in the, in the city county of Butte Silver Bowl. So with that, I just kind of want to draw attention to some of the major initiatives that are new in this year's budget or, or major carryovers. I mean, I think first and foremost, you recall that we had a passage of the bond issue for the new outdoor aquatic facility. That's a much-needed quality of life improvement here and we're really looking forward to moving ahead with that. At this point, if you recall, we did pass a bond issue for 7.2 million dollars that the taxpayers would pay towards the construction of an 8.7 million dollar facility. That 1.5 million difference is made up from a couple of areas. A million of it, maybe a little bit more is going to be made up from private contributions led by a $500,000 challenge grant from the Town Pump Charitable Foundation as well as a number of other businesses and nonprofit organizations who came to meet that challenge. In addition to when we get into some of the capital additional capital improvement projects and requests that, that is before you for your consideration are contingent upon a $500,000 transfer from our 40-40 capital improvement fund to match that million that has come from, from other non-taxpayer sources. So that is kind of the, the new leading project that we're going to be focusing on this year. In addition to that, you recall that we're, we're moving forward in the current year with the re-establishment of our sidewalk improvement program where citizens are able to improve their, their neighborhood sidewalks by having us do those and then pay them off on their taxes over a five-year period. We're moving ahead with the full implementation of that project in this next year. It costs $385,000 to get that project rolling. That will be added to additional almost $1 million in the CTEP and transportation improvement projects that include a lot of additional sidewalks. If you go down, they, we've already completed the ones down at the NCAT area by Skyline Park. They're in the process of getting ready to start the, the new sidewalks around the community ice center down there on Wall Street and a variety of other areas which will also, other improvements within that CTEP line item include the Atgrade Crossing at Montana and Front Street as well as the bike lane system on the flats that you've undoubtedly seen and maybe even heard from some of your constituents on, on the flats. Unlike the dedicated bike lanes that were put on in the uptown areas where there's a significant speed differential between a biker and a, and an automobile and that, that dedicated lane is necessary for safety and traffic flow reasons. All of the bike lane routes on the flats are sharrows, meaning that it's where the biker will share the, the driving lane with the, the motorist. And so it won't impact the width of the, the driving lanes, so to speak, such as the dedicated bike lanes. So those are, those are big improvements, over a million dollars in, in sidewalk and additional transportation improvements. While not listed on this major initiative, we are continuing forward. If you recall, last year, we added an additional $600,000 in change to the roads capital improvement fund and we're moving ahead with that same amount going into, to roads for, for this year. In the, the building type public infrastructure projects, we have got a, the remaining million dollars on the minor league, American Legion grade baseball complex up at Copper Mountain Park. In fact, they're out there putting the sod down on the outfield and the infield and the adjacent areas beginning today. So go out and take a look at that. Great improvement for, for our city's parks and recreation system. And then of course, there's about $24 million in remaining improvements to be expended at the Basin Creek Water Treatment Plant and our metro sewer plant upgrades. And then the last two in these major infrastructure initiatives, I think we have been, been paying attention and trying to get our arms around a lot of the improvements necessary when you do business in these beautiful but, but very old and, and needy historic buildings like the courthouse. And so we are moving forward with estimated $300,000 amount to do a preliminary architectural and engineering estimate, which will give us what the total amount necessary is going to be to make the structural improvements as well as energy efficiency and technology improvements to our, our courthouse. And lastly, if you recall, it's a, it's a large sum that was approved last year. It's just carried over almost $700,000 in technology upgrades that will allow us to more efficiently serve the citizens and our citizens will be able to more easily access all the, the things that go on in, in their local government via our website and eventually the, the streaming capacity that we have up here at the council chambers for council meetings in addition to other public meetings that may choose to locate up here in the council chambers. At this point, I might ask the chair if she wants to entertain any questions from the council, but I do have a number of other items that I'm going to go through at this point.
You could wait until you're finished, it's fine.
Okay, good enough. Personnel costs. Let's start with the increases. As you know, we've got a, a number of collective bargaining units with our city county employees and given that we engage with those bargaining units in two-year contracts, we made a commitment to increase their, their salary at one nominal 1.5% cost of living in each of the two years of that contract. And so we are committed to the, to the 1.5% for the second year of this contract, which runs through the fiscal year before you. That is, while as, whereas 1.5% and additionally the, the $30 a month increase towards the health insurance premiums that were presented to you all as far as the 10-plus percent increases that we're looking at, that $30 helps defray the employee cost a little bit on that, but certainly it's still going to amount to an over $80 a month increase on the employee side as well. So whereas $30 a month from the employer contribution and a 1.5% cost of living increase doesn't sound like a, an enormous amount when you add it up across the workforce, it totals $572,000 for our tax-supported funds and a little over a million dollars for all of our funds, which includes the water sewer landfill divisions as well as our tax-supported funds. There's only one staff addition included in this year's budget and that is one that has been long planned for it. It's adding an additional water treatment plant operator to the rotation so we can cover our new Basin Creek Water Treatment Plant and that comes in at a combined salary and benefits amount of just under $80,000. But I want to draw attention to some of the, the reductions that we were faced with making based on some of the projected revenues that Jeanette will talk about here in, in a few minutes. We eliminated temporarily for now, but possibly permanently three full-time positions from our budget as, as indicated in those three positions there. That amounts to a cost savings of $136,000 to the tax-supported budgets. In addition to that, we challenged every single one of our tax-supported budgets to find savings in their operating costs. And those reductions in annual operating costs ranged anywhere between 5% and over 10% for an average of an 8% reduction across all of our tax-supported operating fund budgets that amounts to another $193,000 in cost savings off of our, our tax-supported budgets. Moving along, and I know this is, it's not necessarily a reduction, but it was, it was certainly a challenging aspect of, of putting together this year's preliminary budget. You know, everybody, everybody's got a request for, for something when it comes to, to capital improvements, personnel improvements. We, we chose to decline nearly all of those requests with the exception of ones that either weren't going to affect the tax-supported funds or were additions that, that have already been passed along for, for a number of different years here. And then even some of the ones that we did grant, if they weren't carryovers, there were, whereas you won't see it because it's a new cost, there were significant cost-saving measures that the, the individual departments made in the, the requests that are before you. I know the law enforcement department in particular worked with our, our finance and budget folks and myself to, to get those, the $51,000 in capital improvement requests on the security system for the LEA administration building as well as their portable radio replacements down from, from what was initially a, a higher request. So if you, if you just kind of go through here, the, the majority of these larger ticket items are either carryovers from last year, such as the, the technology capital costs that I already touched on in that $668,000 number, the two fire apparatuses that the fire department is, is requesting for. You will see that the, we have, we need to do electrical upgrades at, at the home Atherton in order for us to, to stay safe there. Seems a little ironic if a, a fire department ends up burning because of faulty wiring. We want, we want to make sure that we're on top of those items and then the thermal imaging cameras, which will allow our, our fire services department to, to provide better services to our, our citizens and businesses. And I will add here that this, we didn't, we gave a full presentation prior to getting into these numbers to the finance and budget department. We'll, we'll provide a final update perhaps at next week's finance and budget committee meetings. If not, the public budget presentations that I'll talk about here in a minute. But we engaged the public again through a, a public budgeting survey and the, the priorities that our citizens gave us in terms of what they thought we should be focusing on and we approached it in a couple of new different ways are matched by, by what we chose to, to focus our new capital requests on here. I know as always is the case, public infrastructure led by roads and sidewalks was again far and away the top priority that citizens wanted us to, to focus on spending our limited dollars and public safety ran a fairly distant but significant second rounded out by variety of other expenditures that I think were reflected adequately based on what, what the priority was that, that our folks gave us in the, the surveys. That was at the point that we, we had finalized the preliminary budget, there had been about 140 individuals who had taken that survey. We've kept the budget survey open for the last couple of weeks. I think we're looking at closing it towards the end of this week, at which point we'll, we'll take a look and see if anything has changed and we'll certainly give you all the results of that budget if, so you can take that into consideration as we move ahead towards crafting our, our final budget here. So with that, I think, you know, you can just, I'll just give you a moment to, to peruse the, the different department by department, capital improvement projects here. The majority of the big ticket items that you see in the water utility division, the, the metro sewer division, a lot of them are carryover, but even the bigger ticket items, I, I would, you know, draw your attention to the $925,000 on line replacement. That's a significant improvement. It's a significant upgrade in our, our services and our public infrastructure, but you will see that a lot of that $925,000 number is made up in grants and matches primarily through a quarter of a million dollar match from Montana Tech to where only about half of that $925,000 is actual rate payer money. And so the sewer, sewer increases have already been factored in based on the rate increases that you've approved to cover our, our debt service requirement under the, the SRF loan that we have. And so even though these are some pretty significant increases, that one and the $400,000 factor truck, they're covered under the existing increases that have already been brought before you. Moving over to the just final list of additional capital improvements, you can see in the, in the blue parenthesis, there's a number of carry- the blue parenthesis, there's a number of carryovers there, but I've talked about a lot of these already, such as the $300,000 capital improvement fund comes out of that same account that we're asking you to consider transferring the 500,000 towards the aquatic facility from. That 300 goes towards, again, the architectural and engineering design and now analysis of restoring our our courthouse and bringing it up to 2015, 2016 standards for efficiency and technology improvements. We got, we've got some some minor improvements to bring our entire library's bathroom system up to ADA code there on the with the completion of the third floor. We've got several million dollars in tax increment district projects that are carried over from from year after year for potential projects that might come about out there as well as the million and a half in additional funds to progress our work on the Greenway Trail System project. We have some some pretty big capital improvement requests, the 365,000 for a stormwater vector truck to improve our ability to maintain the stormwater system per our super fund obligations, as well as a $600,000 purchase of a compactor out at the landfill, which is kind of on a rotation basis. We've already put it off a couple of years. And if we don't do it this year, we risk losing the $200,000 trade-in that we get on that piece of of major equipment there. And so we've, we've ultimately decided to move that one forward. Again, both the landfill and the the super fund expenses won't affect folks' tax bills. We have a shared capital purchase with our asphalt zipper. And if you had a question on exactly what an asphalt zipper is, I'll defer that to Public Works Director Schultz. But as I understand it, as you see, it's shared through the road, which is a tax-supported fund, and then the water and metro projects. It's going to allow us to better and more quickly fill our trenches and whatnot when we when we're doing line replacements. And so that's, that's a, I think, a good improvement towards the the health of our our roads as we continue to maintain our our aging subsurface You'll see we have a equipment reserve carryover on the 911 as well as a grant that was received in fiscal year 2016. We also got a cybersecurity grant from the Federal Emergency Management Association for $135,000 to allow us to keep pace with being able to respond in the event of an emergency. And then the last two, Danette already talked about the rocker playground match, so I'll skip that one. And then the pole barns, if you recall, there's five pole barns, three of which have been accepted by Butte Silver Bow City County that will be disassembled and then reassembled at a at another location. And that money is, again, not taxpayer money. Some of it is coming through the state of Montana DEQ. The other money is coming out of the Montana Pole Trust account for us to re-erect those buildings when we find the most suitable location for those. And then the last three that I think are worthy of noting here, I already mentioned, we don't quite yet know what the debt service payments are gonna be on the aquatic facility, although we have a a pretty good idea of what those are gonna be, as has been previously reported. We're looking into starting to switch towards rather than purchasing equipment for our motor pool at a potential lease program that stands to save us some some money, both in in the capital improvement costs as well as the maintenance costs in the future that we don't quite yet have accurate numbers on. And then another thing that we want to bring forward for your consideration is right now, we have one extension agent. That's the way it's always been in Butte Silver Bow that serves all purposes that have historically been under the the MSU extension, and that includes horticulture, master gardening, urban forestry, forage, family and consumer science. As, as you know, I mean, I'm not gonna mince any words. I think there's been a lot of challenges and difficulty recently and even in the past relative to that position. When we started looking at the personnel budgets this year and in that program in particular, timing aligned itself to where the administrative assistant that we fully fund to support that position, that that individual ended up taking another job. And so it was a vacant position. And we looked at all of our vacant positions as was how we came to the conclusion to to not fill those those three that I talked about right in the beginning there. For the same, if not maybe a little lesser, cost, we can join the ranks of the way extension serves every other community of our size and even smaller in the state of Montana by taking that money and advertising for a second extension agent. And the the difference would be that we would remain to have the one that serves the the horticultural needs, urban forestry, master gardening. You need a pretty specialized background in order to be able to to do that plant-centric job duties. The other side of of what we've been juggling with one position for the last several decades does not require the same job skills and qualifications as it does to be a good master gardener, a good arborist. You need to be able to have a very good knowledge of of the forage program and a lot of softer skills, people's skills and and organizational skills. And so if we move forward with this second extension agent, which again, I would emphasize is is not only gonna be a new direction for us to go to try and maybe improve the services that come out of that office, it's also gonna be at a at a cost-neutral move to our our general fund budget. And we'll be able to advertise for a position that has those those people's skills. And we don't have to worry about advertising for another plant specialist. And I think the the hope is that that is gonna gonna help him improve things moving ahead with interim forage committee that Commissioner Ralph has stepped up to to take part of as well. And so that's worth mentioning because it's it's part, it's a new piece here in the preliminary budget, but it's not gonna have a an overall effect, certainly not an increase to the to the total budget. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Danette.
Like Chief Executive Vincent said, I'll be discussing the projected taxable value, which is no surprise to everyone that we're anticipating a decrease in our taxable value based on the copper and millennium commodities that are mined over at Montana Resources. We talked a little bit about this in finance and budget as well in our public meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. And gross proceeds are estimated to be at a decline of $1.2 million, which we discussed being 37.73% reduction. There's a handout that I gave you that is separate from the PowerPoint, and it kind of gives you the scenario and history of gross proceeds and and what they've been in the past and and the decline that we're seeing this year. So if you look at that trend in 2012, it was 10.4 million. And now in 2016, we're down to 5.1 million in projected gross proceeds tax. Along with gross proceeds tax is tied into that is the metal mines tax. So it's similar, it's taxed similar, it's on the value of what's mined, the copper, millennium, some silver over at Montana Resources. And a portion of that metal mines tax stays with the state of Montana. It's a 1.8% tax. And then the rest is allocated back to Butte Silver Bow, which Butte Silver Bow has a trust, a fund that we hold separate that we cannot use or access unless the mine was to close. Then we also have an allocation where 33 and 1/3 goes to our general fund. And then another 33 and 3/3 goes to the elementary, and then a 33 and 1/3 goes to the high school. So those decreased as well based on that that value. We have a decrease in the certified value. We talked a little bit about how the reappraisal cycle affected us, that appeals came in and and as a result of those appeals, three, we've lost about $384,000 in revenues associated with those appeals. But if you recall, last budget year, we did put additional $285,000 in reserves. We thought that's the number that we were gonna see granted as appeals, or that was our best estimate from information we received from the Department of Revenue. But as they go through the actual appeal process and go to the county appeals board, it was a little bit higher. So we're looking at a total decrease, if you're looking at the certified values from last year to this year, a total decrease in revenues, property tax revenues of $1.6 million. Now, these decreases could be offset with some additional new construction. We've had, very fortunate to have some new construction in Silver Bow County. We've had pizza ranch, we've had motels, we've had housing, we've had housing units. And those are really difficult to measure what that new value in construction's gonna be. Excuse me. Just simply because the value is what it was on January. In January, when Department of Revenue's out there and finalizing their values on especially residential and commercial properties. And so to get that number, know how far along those businesses were and what department would, how Department of Revenue praises it as a difficult estimate. A lot of times I try to use the construction assessment values that come through the planning department to give me a little bit of an idea of a mill to try to work with the resource and requirement schedule. But this year was a lot difficult, more difficult. And so right now, we're waiting for Department of Revenue to give us the certified values before we even begin to venture and guess on that number. Last year, we seen a taxable value increase of around $384,000. That's just taxable value. That's not taxes from taxable value, which was lower than what I anticipated. But so I have the idea that that number will increase slightly this year. Not enough, not even come close to the offset the 1.6 million that we're seeing in reduction, however. Takes a lot of homes, residential and commercial to build one mill. So like Chief Executive said, how did we address and how are we balancing the resource and requirement schedule today? We've addressed it with staff reductions in the finance and budget department, health department, and community development for over $136,000. We decreased operating budgets where we could that relate to supplies, travel, training, some repair and maintenance services across the tax-supported funds in the areas that we could. It was about 8% reduction, around $192,000 difference from what they had submitted to the finance and budget department for requests. Then we've also looked at the possibility that we're gonna have to tap into the reserve funds up to about $500,000. But again, we were at 16.28%. I just checked when I went downstairs, we're at 16.28% last year. So I don't, I see us remaining close to that 16% that we've tried to have as a goal for the last two fiscal years since I've been back. Again, we've addressed just capital needs that have been necessary or a carryover. It's not, there's not a lot of small vehicles or anything that has been allocated within the budget. And then finally, the Tax Inc. Financing District will be remitting another allocation this year that will help offset the local government as well as the schools. And then it'll be remitted back to the state. That allocation sheet has been passed out to you as well. From that allocation sheet, you'll see that the local government will get about $1.3 million from the Tiffett. The countywide schools or the state will see 463,000. Ramsey, the local school district, elementary school district will get 366,000. High School, Bu School District Number One will get 275,000. And then the other entities, such as the Port of Montana and Airport and Mile High Soils, will get about $57,000 from that allocation. Did you want to add anything?
You know, one other thing to add relative to the staff reductions, I mean, we made the the decisions to to not fill those those three positions. There will likely be a number of other retirements, you know, departures over the course of the next year. And whereas we can't really anticipate where those might be right now, we're gonna review every single one of them. And obviously, only fill the the most crucial positions so that we can continue to to build our reserves as we head into the 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 next fiscal year budget. Because one thing that we have made it a point to do is maintain some some pretty close conversation and communication with Montana Resources as well as the Department of Revenue. And it's likely that we could see another subpar year on our gross proceeds and and other revenues in 2017, 18. So anything that we can save in the current fiscal year is gonna help us as we move into the the next one.
Great. And to add to that, as we're forecasting, we don't just kind of look in a, in a little bottle here for one year at a time, we're forecasting out. And so we know that coming into next year, into fiscal year 18, we're gonna be at similar copper prices, similar type of budget that we're seeing today. However, we'll see some additions come on from Montana Resources through our conversations with their executive staff. There will be four new trucks added in to the tax base that were not picked up yet this year, but they are being used currently, but in January, they weren't in service. And then we'll see some additional tax base generated from the water treatment plant. So all those will be definite positives as we go into fiscal year 18 and forecasting forward. Through our conversation with Montana Resources, we've also feel that going into 19, 20, we're gonna see upscale. So we're gonna start moving back up. So we're in those two down years, maybe two and a half or three years down, and then we're gonna go back up from our conversations and as best as they can tell by the market of what's gonna happen. Of course, there's other things that influence their ability to operate, such as power prices and whatnot. I also need to point out to you on the graphs, and we had some discussion about our cut, our, the cuts that we made in O and M. So we made O and M cuts after the department submitted budgets to us of 192,000. But if you were to look at the tax-supported funds and look at the FY16 budget to the FY2017 budget, the O and M has actually decreased by $355,000 and capital outlays decreased by $1,833,000. So there was more cuts made prior to the departments coming forward and then after, when we started sitting down looking at the preliminary budget. Move on here. On the fee-based budgets, we've done a lot of discussion about tax-supported funds and and what's happening with the tax-supported funds. With the fee-based budgets, the metro sewer increases on the final year, the increase that was approved back in fiscal year 2014, the increase is 3%. Prior years, it was 11%. And now this is the final year of the three, it's a 3% increase or $3 the unit, which equates to about $9 for the average residential property. Landfill, water, and maintenance fees will remain the same as fiscal year 2016 at this time.
Thank you, Danette.
I would open up this opportunity for questions for either Chief Executive or Danette. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Danette, I guess this one's for you. On the items not included in the budget yet, and the preliminary is one is the debt service on the aquatic facility. That would come out of the bond issue, though. That's paid for by bonds.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Palmer, so when we do the bond resolution, we try to put something in the budget so that you can see it as quickly as you can, as is available. And then also, we need to get something added on to the mill levy cards so that we can start applying it to tax bills. But the but the bond resolution itself has its own budget authority contained within it. So if we don't have exact numbers, we might have to come back and change them, but based on that bond resolution. So you're exactly right.
Just as a follow-up.
Commissioner Palmer?
So on the other end of the aquatic facility is the maintenance issue. Does that take effect this year or not until the pool is complete?
Danette?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Palmer, I haven't seen the final project timeline. J.P. Gallagher, the Parks and Rec Director, and Dave Shels, Public Works Director, and myself and Chief Executive are meeting on Friday to kind of get that timeline hashed out. But definitely no operation budget will take place in fiscal year 17.
So Commissioner Palmer, follow-up.
So it was for 20 years, correct? The the maintenance.
Danette?
Yeah, Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Palmer, yes, it's a, that that part of the ballot said that we could levy up for 350,000 for 20 years.
Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if this is for Danette or Matt or maybe Dave. See, I see there's not going to be any fee increases out at the metro, or excuse me, the landfill. But we're asking, you know, we'd need a $600,000 compactor. What what is the driver? Review to see if there, you know, if we ought to increase those costs or, you know, commercial cost, or is that something that we need to look at, you know, for future?
Danette?
Yep, Madam Chair, Shaw, Commissioner. Madam Chair, Commissioner Sorge, if you recall, last year we looked at that and we put the capital component back into those rate structures and we tried to balance that back out the best that we could. So right now, there's a capital component that we reserve every year out there in the landfill for these large type purchases as well as cell expansion. So we do that. We use the financial assurance test. So we say that we have our post-closure costs in hand and that we meet those tests. Pioneers contracted every year to do that landfill financial assurance test. And then we present to you in January those findings, which always were well above meeting that obligation, as well as that equipment component right now. Going forward, every year, what we do with that, this time of year, actually, we do it in probably April or May, Karen Hassler and myself, we look at the pro forma entries. We don't look at just the current year budget. We look at what happens if we put these items in the budget and we do pro formas going forward for two or three years. We have to specially do that with any bonds that we have outstanding. So metro, we have to do that. That's a requirement. We still look at that monthly on water. It used to have to be done monthly, so we just continued that monthly financial statement. So we're having a look to see what's happening. And we do it with landfill as well.
Thank you, Danette.
Any other questions? Commissioner Pudel Dolen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Danette and Matt, for all the explanations. On the staff reductions, it says temporary. Are you just waiting for final numbers from the state or final numbers from somewhere to see in fact whether or not you can add those back in?
Temporary at this, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pudel Dolen, temporary at this point means that those reductions will carry through the entirety of the 2016-17 budget year. And we, you know, we'll review whether or not, how well we were able to maintain our level of services without those positions at the end of the year. And so we, I guess we just kind of held out hope that if our situation improves and that we feel it's prudent to add those back in at a later date, the option is open. But no, at this point, to answer your question directly, they're not going to be added back in in this year's budget.
I have a comment and a couple of questions. First, I want to thank Danette and Matt for putting this together. It's very easy to understand, and I sat with Danette today for about an hour and went through the, my questions, and they're all very well answered. And I appreciate Julie and everybody in your department for job well done, for presentation. Two questions, and first of all, I had forgotten about the fee rate increase for Metro Sewer that we had approved in 2014. So just for the record, and this is what people are going to ask us, our taxpayers, is what will be the total tax increase for a home, let's say valued at $100,000, if you took that and the bond that we approved for the aquatic facility? Can you just give us a rough estimate?
Madam Chair, at this time, I really can't give that rough estimate. Right now, there's no tax increase built in the resource requirement schedule for any of the tax-supported funds. That's those cuts that were made. We made all those cuts to make sure that there wasn't an increase in there. As far as a tax bill increase, you'll see that metro fee increase and an average, it's going to go up $3, but an average house has three units, so it's about a $9 increase on a residential property. Hopefully by next Wednesday, I'll be able to hand out to you what it looks like and the value of a home, the similar comparisons that we've always done. We have to really meet this Friday to further answer your question related to the aquatics facility. We have to meet to know what that timeline is, to know when the cash flow of funds is going to be, so we know when the timing of the bonds are going to happen. And then therefore, we would know when our debt service payments were going to take place before we can really get a handle on what that number's going to be.
And that's $9 for the year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had was, and I really was surprised that we are going to be allocating another $1.3 million out of the TIFID. And I would like to know if you can tell us what the balance is. I mean, I know they have several million dollars, but if you could just give us an idea, I appreciate that.
Right. So Madam Chair, to answer your question, if you recall, last year, they had a little over $23, $24 million, and they allocated out an additional $6.5 million in debt service payments in July to call in some bonds earlier that were direct bonds with REC. And that brought their balance down. I think to, I hate to guess right here, but it's a little over $18 or $19 million with a projected $4 million increase coming in for the next fiscal year. And then they also have a $1.2 million revolving loan fund out there.
This is an allocation, not a loan?
No, this is an allocation. Yep, this is an allocation. Many communities across the state of Montana have allocation agreements and have in place since the time of the creation of their districts, whether it was URA district or TIFID district. When they have funds available, and I'll let Commissioner McDonough add to this a little bit since he's on the board, but they have a great strategic plan in place, they have a great capital improvement plan in place out there, they know the projects that they want to get done. They only have five more years. TIFID sunsets in 2022. They have five years left. They feel that they have sufficient funds to cover those projects right now. If a new project was to come on, they may not continue these allocation agreements for the next few years, but they have agreed that every March, they will start looking to see if they're going to allocate. This is a normal, it's normal for TIFIDs to distribute funds like this, that Bozeman District distributes to their city, to the county, to their schools as well as the state. Some other districts, such as Whitefish and Anaconda, distribute, have an agreement in place where they only distribute back to their schools. This allocation that the TIFID approved at their last board meeting is an allocation, like I stated, back to Butte Silver Bow, back to Ramsey, back to school district number one, and then back to the state of Montana. And it's a great tool. It is a great tool, and it's working how they're supposed to be working. We've seen that increase in the URA district from the first URA district sunset. We've seen that increase come back to our taxable value. And now we're seeing the benefits of having that TIFID out there and having great partners in REC, Precision Metal, and FedEx, and all those that are out there. Not only are they great employers, but we see our tax base, our tax base starting to grow, and then that allocation's starting to offset any increases we might have had to do or reduction in services.
Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Danette, one more time, could you just give us the rundown of your schedule, you know, for, I'm sure everybody here is clear, but maybe for those who might be wanting to listen on the radio and have some sort of idea what it might be for when you want to have the final budget?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sorge, the budget schedule that we turned in, I believe in April, that Commissioner Sorge and I worked out together, shows that the preliminary budget would be adopted, or recommendation for adoption of the preliminary budget, not the final budget, preliminary budget next Wednesday night. That would allow us opportunity to move forward, beginning with the public hearing process on July 27. We have a lot of time in between July 27 and August 15 that we're looking for the final adoption of the budget at a special meeting. And then I think the Chief Executive has some other meetings that he is going to do some public meetings.
Yeah, and I would like to add in a little bit on the, kind of the remittance from the Tax Increment District and before Commissioner McDonough might want to add in here. But it was a pretty, I thought it was a very robust discussion at the board, TIFID Board Meeting last week when we brought this to their attention. And again, I would just like to echo the credit that Danette gives to that board and Kristen Rosa in having a real good strategic plan for how we continue to increase our increment out there and build economic development for the larger community. But at the end of the day, I think they made a very good decision after taking an appropriate look at what their reserves are, what their existing projects are over the next year or so, and what their increment was to be collected this year. And that, at the end of the day, yes, this is a tax increment district focused on spurring economic development through infrastructure improvements, which they've done a very good job and will continue to do so through these remaining five years. But at the end of the day, these are taxpayer dollars. Everybody can benefit by these, either through the course of these sort of remittances that are a lot more regular, I think, or have been a lot more regular in other TIFIDs across the state. We're kind of shifting to that same model here in Butte Silver Bow, and it comes at a time, an appropriate time, when we're seeing our tax revenues kind of take a little dip. I know Commissioner Foley was there, nobody else was, but there was a really compelling and serious presentation last Friday by Margie Sekum with Action Inc. And I would just draw attention to the fact that we have 42% of our residents in Butte Silver Bow right now that are living at 200% or less of the federal poverty rate. As long as those numbers are looking in that area, I take it very seriously, as does Danette and I'm sure all of you, that we got to be looking wherever we can to lighten the load and balance that with increase in services and infrastructure improvements. And I know, whereas the final numbers aren't in yet on the certified values, we're hopeful that we can continue the trend that I've tried to set up in my short tenure up here, that we are not going to be adding significant increases to folks' tax bills. And I know that's easy for me to say and hard for folks to kind of see, because I would remind you that roughly 50% of your tax bill, when you open that up, is coming from other taxing jurisdictions. Half your tax bill comes from the local government. The other half comes from the university and the school districts. And so we account for about half of that bill. And I know there's also additional factors in there, such as the necessary rate increases that we needed to take on with Metro in order to get that $34 million loan to do our necessary treatment upgrades. But we've been doing a really good job, I would contend, at holding the line on taxes. In fact, we have seen a net reduction in the property taxes that we have put on our residents over the three years that I've been in control of bringing preliminary budgets to you for your consideration. And I think this year will be another case of where we hope to keep it cost neutral for our citizens. And so we would like to continue, like I said, we're going to have the online survey for citizens to be able to get on our website and give us feedback that way. We've also got, in addition to the public hearings that will be held up here, we've got, tentatively got, the dates are set, we'll just need to, we'll firm up the times and locations. But right now, we're looking at a next Tuesday, July 19 evening presentation, public presentation at the Emergency Operations Center out on Wynn for folks on the flats. That will be in the evening, followed by a Wednesday, July 20 noon presentation at the Belmont Senior Center during lunch to try and hit some of our senior population. And then an additional presentation on July 26, that's again a Tuesday, and we would do that in the evening. I don't have a location for that set quite now, but we'll be doing it uptown to make it easy for our uptown residents to attend.
Any further questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Danette. What can you tell me about the condition of our parking enforcement? I don't see much. I've flipped through this budget book. I am reading page for page, but I know that's always been a expenditure that seems to be high, and I don't see much about it in there. What can you tell me about that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fisher, first of all, I have to apologize for a sheet of paper that I had hid right here, because at our July 6 meeting, we had noted a few things that we didn't discuss at the July 6 that really needed to be discussed tonight. And a couple were pointed out. We, in the budget that you have, the preliminary budget that you have, we didn't remove the Secretary of Community Development, which we fully intended to move. So the one that you're looking at, if you turn to the page, you see that position, but it is removed. We also removed the Public Works Coordinator position that was in the landfill. That's no longer gone, or no longer in the budget. And then we made some small changes related to the transfer to the archives. But the item that we didn't discuss a lot, that we should have had some more discussion on, is that we have a loan that's been in place with the landfill back into the Parking Enforcement Department for several years. It's over $145,000. And within this current budget, we have put money that will transfer funds from the general fund into the Parking Commission, so they can begin paying that loan off at five year, over a five-year period. But further, we've emphasized that we need to look at the bigger picture and determine the direction we need to take with the Parking Commission. So does it land within public safety? Does it land within the Parking Commission itself and that we continue to fund it with an operating transfer into the Parking Commission? My staff has done some analysis work. We need to dig deeper because the original was a high-level summary, and we looked at the revenues versus expenditures, and we could see a trend every year going. But, excuse me, I need to dig deeper into the revenue, but the expenditures are staying pretty consistent. We've seen the definite decline in revenues, and so we need to go to each revenue line item and see what happened in those revenue line items before we bring something forward to you, a more formal plan as to how, or recommendation from staff as to how we need to address it. But it's definitely one of those funds that have to, we have to pay some attention to and get addressed.
Follow-up.
Follow-up. Chief Executive.
And that being said, in addition, I mean, there's obviously going to be some very significant changes that we need to try and project and consider with the construction of the new parking garage. That is going to add a whole new layer to the revenue calculations as well as the expenditures. So that'll be done over the course of the next fiscal year as we plan for the new parking structure coming online.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again, Madam Chair. Yeah, I guess my concern is, I know we, on the Budget and Finance Committee, and going through this for the last three years, it seems that we've always lost around $150,000 per year, or around that amount in this parking thing. We recently moved it into another department, and prior to that, we'd done some handheld devices. I'm just kind of curious if, you know, we're getting any type of return on our investment. If it seems we're still losing $150,000 a year, maybe we're not making any headway. It don't show nothing in the budget.
Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Fisher, just to clarify there, we're not losing 150, we're losing about, it's about $20,000 a year over the last three years that they've been, that it's been in a deficit versus the revenues that it's allocating or bringing in. But over the course of time, it has been, it's short $145,000. So that's where probably that $150,000 number's coming from. So over time, it's still, it has that negative cash position at the end of every year that we need to address, and then we need to go forward with, how are we going to address, you know, we're really putting a Band-Aid on it this year, and then now we need to address it. We need to figure out where does that lie and what should it look like?
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again. I think I'm referring to when you add in the wages and the benefits of the employees and the whole department as a whole, rather than just the revenue coming in and paid out. You know, the overall picture, I think, is pretty devastating in that department.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fisher, I can give you that analysis next week. It does cost around $155,000, $160,000 every year to operate, but it brings in about $130,000, $140,000 in revenues. This year, it's down. This year's $120,000 in revenues.
There's no such thing as a free lunch, and there's no such thing as free parking either.
Okay, any further questions? All right, thank you, Danette. We will continue to keep a couple of your communications on, held in advance. Go ahead.
Madam Chair and Council of Commissioners, next week too, we will present the performance budget. I highly encourage you to look at the performance budget, especially for those areas that you have concerns or questions about. You know, what is the department doing? What is their workload? What are their goals and objectives for the next year? I encourage you to really look at that and, you know, take the line item budget with it. There will be some financial sections within the performance budget as well, but I encourage you to look at it and see what departments are doing. There's a lot going on out there.
Okay, thank you, Danette. Really appreciate all your hard work. We'll see you next week. All right, moving along to Section 2, this is Communication Number 16-151. Sheriff Ed Lester, Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize Chief Executive to sign contract with CCCS to transport youths to detention center. Ed informed me that we are to continue to hold this in advance. He's still awaiting some information, so we will do that. Section 3, Communication Number 16-185. Carl Hafer, 6050 Porter, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners and the Chief Executive address reasoning with regard to Grove Creek contamination and future plans. If you recall, last week, we had a communication from Julia Crane's office and the Planning Department, giving a copy of a letter from Mr. Muller, and I believe Mr. Hafer is at this time satisfied. this time satisfied with that for the time being. So Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we note Communication Number 16-185 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to note Communication 16-185 and place it on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 4, Communication Number 16-236. Bill Maloney, 358 East Mercury Street, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize purchase of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. We did receive a letter from the Land Sales Committee giving us the go-ahead to allow this purchase, so we will wait for the county attorney's office to draft the resolution indeed on that. Correct? County Attorney Joyce?
Sorry? Madam Chair, I believe it was introduced last week. It was considered by the Judiciary Committee tonight. Resolution 1629.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, we do have a cross-reference. I told that today, and I just completely forgot. So let's see. That would be Council Resolution Number 16-29. Commissioner Morgan?
16-29.
29, which is cross-reference it. Correct? Eileen, we should cross-reference it and place it on file? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we cross-reference Communication Number 16-236 with Council Resolution Number 16-29 and place this communication on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference Communication 16-236 with Resolution Number 16-29 and place this on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Eileen, for reminding me of that one. Section 5, Communication Number 16-267. Danette Elgleason, Director, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting Council of Commissioners approve referral of the fiscal year 2017 preliminary budget to the Finance and Budget Committee for consideration at the July 6 meeting and to the committee to hold this evening for consideration at July 13 meeting tonight. So we will continue to hold this in advance and keep it open until we have final approval of the budget. Section 6, Communication Number 16-268. Danette Elgleason, Director, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a presentation on July 13, 2016, on the fiscal year 2017 preliminary budget. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll make a motion that we place Communication Number 16-268 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 16-268 on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 7, Communication 16-285. Karen Burns, Director, Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a public hearing on July 6, 2016, to receive comment on a proposed five-year tax abatement for the Copper King Inn renovation project. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held that public hearing, I'll make a motion that we place Communication 16-285 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 16-285 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 8, Communication Number 16-293. Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize time on July 6, 2016, agenda to conduct a bid opening regarding the Butte Silver Bow Montana Tech wastewater gravity sewer project. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll make a motion that we place Communication Number 16-293 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 16-293 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 9, Communication Number 16-305. Danette Elgleason, Director, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a public hearing on the final budget to begin on July 27, 2016, to be continued until adoption of the fiscal year 2017 final budget. We will hold that open until that occurs, so we continue to hold this in advance. Section 10, Communication Number 16-309. Pamela Haxpicotti, Executive Director, Butte Local Development Corporation, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize time on the July 27, 2016, agenda to report on the past year's operations of the BLDC, and we will hold that in advance until that date. Section 11, Communication Number 16-311. Dory Scruckroot, Office of Community Development, requesting Council of Commissioners concur with the recommendation of the sale and authorize the county attorney to prepare a resolution for sale of the 68 Missoula Avenue, Butte, Montana, to Samantha Halverson and Robert Fisher. We, well, I'm going to ask Commissioner Morgan to make this recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we concur with the Communication 16-311 and refer to the county attorney's office to draft the resolution indeed and hold this communication in advance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur with 16-311 with their recommendation, and we need to authorize the county attorney's office to draft the resolution indeed, so we'll continue to hold it in advance. Section 12, Communication Number 16-312. Dory Scruckroot, Office of Community Development. I'm sorry. What?
Need a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, it said hold in advance, and oh, well. We have a motion and a second, and we will. Is there anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That hold in advance threw me off. Commissioner Sorge, did you have a question? All right, moving on to Section 12, it's a similar situation, so I think I'll get this right. Communication 16-312. Dory Scruckroot, Office of Community Development, requesting Council of Commissioners concur with the recommendation of sale and authorize the county attorney to prepare a resolution for the sale of 57 West Broadway Street, Butte, Montana, to Don Andrews. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we concur with Communication 16-312 and refer to the county attorney's office to draft a resolution indeed and hold this one in advance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur with 16-312 and authorize the county attorney to draft the resolution indeed and hold this in advance. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point in our meeting, I would offer up the opportunity for any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing none? Anything else to come before us this evening? Announcements or news? Chief Executive Benson?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I would be willing to take it upon myself, given that the presentation by Margie Sekum on the state of the community's poverty situation took place at 9 o'clock last Friday morning, I could reach out to her and see if she could come give that presentation to council in the coming weeks.
That'd be great. I was sorry I missed it, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to come before us this evening? Commissioner Morgan?
I'll make your motion re-adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
We're doing a lot of house cleaning.